It's
Hi, good evening.
I don't get to use my gavel. I was really excited at seven o'clock.
I'm sorry. You can still use gavel. Go for it. There you go. You're official now.
All right. For the sake of everyone's time, let's get started. I call the August 20th, 2024 regular board meeting of Glencoe Park District to order. Lisa, please call the roll and state the time.
Great. At 7:00 PM. Commissioner Born?
Yes.
Commissioner Colby? Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Spector?
Here.
President Spain?
Here. Consent agenda items A through C are routine. Does any commissioner want any item pulled from the consent agenda items?
No.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
To move.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Born?
Yes.
Commissioner Colby? Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Spector?
Yes.
President Spain?
Yes, and I don't believe we have any members of the public in attendance today. So we'll move forward with the financial report.
Thank you, President Spain. Good evening, everyone. So I know we're anxious to get to the comp plan tonight, so I'll just cover a few things at a high level on this month's financial report. Mainly, obviously, this time of year, the beach and boating operations are of interest and pleased to see that we wound up much better than where we were at last year. Strong pass sales overall, so we wound up $193,000 for both the swimming and boating beach combined. That was compared to about $150,000 in the prior year, so some very good results there for the beach. And then we'll just point out that in our corporate and rec admin funds at the bottom there, we did transfer over the master plan capital transfer $1.2 million from the recreation fund and $800,000 from the corporate fund, and that was done in July of 2024. So those transfers are made and that money is available now in the capital project fund. Any other questions or comments on the financial report?
I had one, and I probably should have asked you before, should have asked you privately, but I don't understand Children's Circle. Your revenue is up, your costs are down, the whole world is dealing with inflation, you've got more enrollment. One of these days, I'm going to understand it, but I just, I just can't figure it out.
So
Good, Michael.
One of the line items is
Good problem to have.
On the substitutes, so we have a line item for substitute teachers that's down significantly because we've had more retention with staff. So there was some significant savings there. And we're also having more consistent teachers and we're having experienced teachers. We were also having some behavioral challenges more the year before that we were bringing additional staff in. So this is probably a more accustomed to what we should expect going forward. We have seen part-time labor go up and then that reduction, obviously, in the substitute labor cost.
Okay, good. I mean, we were all worried when we, I'm looking at Stephanie over there, but we were all worried about the viability of this program going forward with retention and things like that. So it sounds like things have stabilized. You're feeling good.
We are looking at about what, 7%, a little bit above 7% minimum wage is going up this year. So there'll be compression, so we'll be making salary adjustments across the board, which may affect this light item a little bit next year.
Can you explain that? Because I thought we were paying above minimum wage already.
We are. So minimum wage is going up from $14 to $15 here in January. So it's been going up in 2025. I think it's the last. It's the mandatory movement. So that compresses all of our wages from our cashiers at the beach, which will be an entry level position all the way up. So what ends up happening is it impacts all those positions and we make adjustments on our part-time wage scale based on that adjustment.
So now the person
So we do that based on other positions within the park district rather than just going by what is the market rate for an employee in Children's Circle?
So that we tend to, Children's Circle might be a little bit different. Really, we treat it on the part-time wages first. And then what's happened is because it's gone from, you know, $8 and $9 minimum wage to now 15, it's really starting to impact those teachers. There was a lot more bigger delta in the, in the past, but now a teacher making 20 with 10, 10 years' experience versus a cashier who's making 15. It really starts to compress on those. So that's where we've had to start making those adjustments because minimum wage really has caused the compression.
Yeah, so if you hire, you know, 16-year-old or 18-year-old at, at $15, and we have a teacher that has maybe a two- or four-year degree and been here 10 years and is only making 22.
And if we're doing, say, if we do a three, maybe a 3% or 4% increase in that wage, and then the minimum wage, I think at one point was 9%. That's where we started to get that compression going on. So now we're down at 7.1%. And that, I think, was a 4.5% or 5% merit last year. So again, that's where those, that delta is really, is really compressing us.
Now, for other daycares that do not have the same employer as those cashiers, et cetera. I mean, clearly, there's always the option to have a non-daycare-related job. Are we seeing just generally like the competition raising wages? Because I know we were kind of in a wage race two years ago. Has that slowed down?
It has. We're probably up, up above the 50%. We're probably in that 50% to 75%, probably closer to the 75% from what we can tell. Local is a little more challenging. So some of Highland Park, when Eka, Northbrook are paying competitively like we are. But some of the other bigger chains are not. So we've actually got pretty competitive.
We're still dealing with the teacher shortage, so we have to stay competitive with those, or the pool has gotten a lot smaller. And so still more people go into that in early childhood education and regular primary or secondary education, and we're going to find that competitiveness remain.
Okay.
Very good question.
Anything else, John?
That's it.
That's good. Okay.
Okay, well, I think we'll then move on to our, our guest speaker. So Jamie's going to give us a presentation on the final comprehensive master plan.
All right.
Take it away.
All right. Well, good evening to commissioners, good evening to staff. This is, I think, a tremendous milestone for the district. Obviously, anytime we can complete, or you can complete a comprehensive plan or a master plan, it's worth celebrating. So I'm really thrilled to be with you this evening. I want to say right on the front end how, how wonderful it was to work with such a competent, intelligent, and responsive, and professional group of, of staff members representing the organization. And certainly, the opportunity to work alongside the board in this exercise has been a tremendous experience for us. So I just want to say on the front end that we really enjoyed the process. We, going back to the very beginning, appreciate the confidence that the district placed in our team to put this process together for you and essentially facilitate the effort. I'm here this evening to share with you a high-level overview of what I believe you have all had the opportunity to review. I understand you received the document a couple of weeks ago along with supplements. And so I'm here to give you, again, a high-level overview of the, the process, but I would say more importantly, the priorities that have been identified for the district and a bit of a, you know, high-level overview of the recommended actions as well. And certainly want to ensure that there are, we have plenty of time for any questions and comments that you may have. So with that, please allow me to go ahead and give you, again, a bit of an overview of the process and more importantly, an overview of the results. So I wanted to start here, and much of this, of course, will be a reminder, you've been very engaged in the exercise from day one. But I feel like it's important for us all in the public sector, in particular, in public parks and recreation, to reflect upon the principles that tend to drive or help us facilitate an exercise in planning. And of course, as you all know, there were a series of strategic principles that were really central and paramount to this effort. And there, while this is an exhaustive list, it certainly, I think, provides a high-level overview of those principles that were really foundational to the work of creating this plan. There was, I would say, a consistent effort to imagine the next 10 years while balancing the realities that the organization, as well as the community, are facing. And then, of course, understanding, trying to understand community needs as well as obviously desires and interests. I think embracing the responsibility the district has to today's citizens, as well as understanding that all decisions and actions taken are going to have an impact on future residents. We tried to ensure, as well as obviously the project team and all of you, that we were considerate of current conditions, the opportunities that were available, if you will, and taking care of what exists, certainly ensuring that high level of service and a commitment to financial sustainability, which this district has had for a very long time. And then, of course, an eye on continuous improvement. And, and that kind of lens allowed us to develop and design recommendations alongside the staff, as well as obviously the board, as they were informed by way of the engagement parts of this process, our touchpoints with the community. So we have a master, comprehensive master plan that's a 10-year document, 2024, 2033, as well as a number of supplements. There were eight specific supplements. And the intention here was to have a plan that was not necessarily concise, but easy to use, kind of a user-friendly document, and then have all the depth and breadth of the detail included in these eight supplements. We have an engagement summary, which obviously summarizes all of the touchpoints we had with you, with the staff, as well as the community. Particular supplement specific to the survey results, the statistically valid survey. We, of course, just a few months ago, had an opportunity to spend time with you. Acuity Survey Firm, Jeff, actually had some time to give you details of the survey results. It's a very robust document. Supplement C is the parks' conditions assessment. D is the facility conditions assessment, and I do want to touch on this one briefly and remind you that this was actually an analysis or an assessment that was completed in 2016. There was an understanding and expectation that we would not repeat that exercise, that there was still some relevance to that. So we used that to inform this plan. Of course, the Glencoe Beach Assessment, the safety assessment specific to take of center, the operational analysis that included administrative analysis, the financial analysis, and some high-level analysis relative to partnership agreement analyses. And then, of course, the strategic action plan that includes, I believe it's 53 specific actions that resulted from the exercise and from the work. One of the things I want to share, just as a precursor, before I get into all the priorities, that we crafted the document in such a way, and we created a table of contents, worked with the project team to ensure that they felt like it was something that would be useful. But we made an effort to connect the dots between the process tasks, the expectations of the scope of work, along with what the resulting priorities were for the district. So I'm going to be presenting to you this evening the priorities that resulted and some of the tasks that were associated with each of those areas, if you will, or those priorities. The five priorities that kind of reveal themselves throughout the process are the five that you see on the screen here. I'm going to be starting with an engaged community, and then we'll move clockwise to the other priorities as you see them in this wheel. And I'm going admittedly a little blind because I have the blind up here and the sun wasn't out, and now it's out. So that said, let's start with engaged community. This would be essentially priority one for the purposes of tonight's presentation. And I want to, again, just share that the engaged community section and the details of this particular priority are included in supplement A, which is that overarching engagement summary, as well as supplement B, which is the statistically valid survey results. Concisely, and to provide you, again, of a bit of an overview, probably a reminder, knowing that you've all had an opportunity to review the documents. We had a number of touchpoints with the community, with you, and of course, with the professional staff. There were a series of interviews conducted. We had a number of planning sessions with the staff, as well as the board. We had a number of focus groups that were hosted with the community, as well as with the staff. We had a public workshop, as well as an open house, that provided us a large kind of open door effort to engaging and inviting the community. There was that community survey that I mentioned, a virtual engagement room that was a complement to the public workshop, as well as the open house, some online questionnaires, and then, of course, project updates where we had an opportunity to share with you where we were in the process and continue to gather your feedback. This was about a year-long effort relative to engagement, and we had an opportunity here from, I would say, more than 500 participants, different participants, and had 500 participations as part of community engagement.
I appreciate that you put into this presentation my lovely body part statue.
I thought it would add a little levity. I have to tell you, we've actually referenced that image in, in a presentation. And people are like, wow, people are actually having a really good time when they do that. So I'm glad you appreciated it.
All right. I just wanted to call out that I noticed.
As you all know, again, and in particular, I wanted to call out some specific community engagement opportunities. Of course, we had the public workshop, and you can see under each of these images how many folks participated, along with a brief summary of what these touchpoints actually were about. Their why essentially in the what. I have to admit, you know, having done this work for a very long time, both as a practitioner as well as a consultant, it seems as though, and I feel confident in saying you've got quite an engaged community, people were interested. They had, I think, a lot of constructive commentary, and they just seem very passionate about the community and truly appreciate value this, this park district. So it was really a pleasure to have the opportunity to visit with so many different folks. Again, just reflecting on the presentation that Jeff shared with all of you, there were a number of reveals that resulted from the survey, as you know. I just called out these two in particular because they were quite insightful and obviously very influential in how we crafted the recommendations. On the left, very briefly, the three priorities that the community identified as part of the survey, the results essentially. And then on the right, of course, that first bar, I think, is quite revealing in terms of a prominent interest in maintaining, right? Maintaining high levels of service, maintaining what you have in contrast to perspectives on growth, and not to suggest that growth and additions and development are necessarily a bad thing, clearly. But I think it speaks to the values of the community relative to their interest in investing in the existing system. As part of this first priority, there were 12 recommended actions. Those, again, are part of the strategic action plan, action plan being supplement H. And I've just provided you a screenshot of what those actions are in this particular priority. Starting with developing a process for the public to communicate with the district regarding general park and rec issues, all the way down to the last three items essentially being an opportunity for the district to continue to adhere to high standards, whether it be through the Illinois distinguished accreditation process, pursuing CAPR accreditation, or obviously, the application for the National Gold Medal Award, which acknowledges excellence in public parks and recreation. Moving on to the next priority, this is the preserved and well-maintained parks and facilities priority. This is, as you probably all recognized, among the more robust priorities identified. There were a lot of moving parts and pieces relative to this particular area. You can see four supplements connect to this particular priority, again, providing you the substance, the details that resulted from each of the assessments and the analyses. The parks assessment, of course, a big part of this particular area. What you see on the screen, very simply, are a couple of screenshots that are included in the plan document itself. The one thing I did want to note is, you know, I would say universally in public parks and recreation, we tend to want to measure ourselves against. We look at high levels of service. I think one of the things that is really important to call out, and I know you have all discussed this, is the fact that while there are national standards, Glencoe does tend to be a bit unique in terms of your availability of property, the affordability of property, and so on. So these are really intended as a, you know, informational, but it's not to suggest that this district must align or should align with the state and national standards as they exist. This gives you, I think, a really nice screenshot, or snapshot, rather, of your current levels of service in contrast to those state and national standards. And then, of course, as you know, there are a number of maps provided in the document. They give you an overall sense of your service areas and how you're doing in terms of, you know, opportunities to reach different audiences, different communities within the Glencoe District community. The facility assessment, again, as I mentioned, the decision was made to use the 2016 work that had been completed. Staff really believed that this was still very relevant, did not want to duplicate an exercise that you had already invested time and money in. So we simply wanted to reference that 2016 information, the data, as part of this plan, ensuring that, obviously, we're building upon this particular priority in such a way that it was complete. We spoke to your parks, of course, your facilities. The one thing I do want to call out here, as you see in the notation at the bottom, the NRPA or National Recreation and Park Association does not have standards relative to facilities and recommendations relative to, you know, number of facilities. So you have state standards here. Again, it's not to suggest that this district should meet or exceed those standards. It's simply to allow you to see a bit of a compare and contrast. But these two screenshots or two tables are actually part of your plan as well. As you know, part of the exercise was the Glencoe Beach Assessment, and this was really based upon areas of interest that had been expressed through not only the request for proposal, the requested scope of work, but of course, what had continued to evolve as areas of interest and considerations on behalf of the district as the process evolved. These four areas, of course, were to look at the beach's resilience, habitat restoration, beach space use, and community education. And then, of course, the opportunity, we had to work with the staff to do and conduct, if you will, a safety assessment of the take of center. And so all of these moving parts and pieces of this particular area resulted in 18 recommended actions, again, included in supplement H. And this is a screenshot of those 18 items. The one thing I do want to emphasize here is the, it's listed as the last recommended action, certainly not to suggest that it's not priority. The last item included, of course, is the proposed referendum to allow the system to continue to invest in its existing assets and continue to maintain high levels of service. So this is a very robust action as recommended, and of course, will be a bit of a heavy lift for the system. Will take some time to actually, not only pursue, but in the event it's successful, it will take time on behalf of the organization, of course, all of you, to ensure that you are able to see the results, right, the fruits of your labor essentially. But I wanted to make sure that I called that one out in particular. And of course, the intention here is to potentially pursue this proposed bond referendum as early as November, which I know has been on the radar for quite some time. And the expectation, the intended outcomes here are to see improvements at the beach, as well as the district's parks maintenance facility. The next priority is program effectiveness. The supplements that really informed this particular priority, again, are A and B, which is the engagement summary, as well as the community survey results. One of the things that we kind of thought about as being an umbrella under which this work would really be completed and the considerations for how particularly Bobby's crew will look at service design and delivery, really fall into the auspices of this particular model. This is a model that has been very prominent in the leisure services industry, public parks and recreation for decades. And I think it's a really great framework for how we think about, you know, the idea of service design and delivery areas where we can actually focus our energies to consider what kind of actions we will take and ensuring that they all align with one of those circles. We had the opportunity, as part of this work, to spend some time with Bobby's team and conduct what we refer to as a service analysis. And we basically had a workshop with staff, and it really gave them a lens through which to think about how they will continue to analyze services. You have a very competent, very intelligent group here in the district. Bobby and the team are doing a lot of this work already, and I think it was just another opportunity for them to have a tool that they might use to continue to build upon the successes that they realize relative to ensuring that you're providing the right services and you're, you know, considering the markets and you're considering other providers or the competition, if you will, and of course, the financial viability of the services. So this was an area, again, we spent a little bit of time with team, provided a resource that will hopefully be helpful to them as they continue to do the good work that they do. Alternatively, we had the opportunity to receive a number of partnership agreements that the district currently has in place. And we actually did a bit of a vetting and analysis of each of those agreements. We looked at the scope of the agreements, the goals, the mutual goals on behalf of the partners, the roles and responsibilities each partner assumes, the obligations each partner is expected to uphold, the milestones essentially, whether or not we're realizing accomplishment or not, the term, and so on. All of the items you see on the left there. All of these analyses, documents are included in the operational analysis. So we had an opportunity to look at the agreements and actually do a bit of, again, a vetting exercise. As a part of this particular priority, there are eight recommended actions, again, included in the strategic action plan. You can see those listed on the screen here, again, starting with applying the recreation service analysis, that tool, and of course, building upon all of the good analyses work that's been done by the district, all the way down to the last item listed there, which is creating an annual district master plan or master program lifecycle document to assure a balanced and updated program portfolio. Life cycles, just like a product life cycle, you know, how is it looking in terms of its trend lines, is it in growth mode, is it actually in decline, maybe in death mode? I don't believe any of the district services are in that place, but it's really a chance for the professional staff to really begin to think about the life cycle of every service that's offered. And then we have financial sustainability and transparency. We had the opportunity to work with John and his team, looking at revenues and expenditures of the operation. All of the deeper dive details are included in supplement G in the operational assessment. Real high-level image here, again, included in that particular supplement. But it, it's broken down by the service areas of the district, giving you an opportunity to see what the expenses are for each of these areas. The subsidy investments, the taxpayer investments you're making, and what the current cost recovery is on behalf of each of these areas, as well as the aggregate, the total for the entire district. We had, I think, an opportunity to finish the process a little bit earlier, but the staff really were committed to ensuring that this particular piece of the process was completed, which allowed us, I think, a bit of, it was a more robust operational assessment and certainly led to some recommended actions on behalf of the organization. And John and his team were really, again, great to work with. There are six specific actions here. First, again, completing the annual evaluation of district offerings, including categories of service, all the way down to exploring alternatives to, for contractor splits. So again, just some connective tissue relative to the financial condition of the system, projections, and of course, some of the actions that the organization would like to take. And then certainly, last but not least, creating a dynamic or maintaining, I would say, a dynamic and inclusive workplace. And there are some task items, as well as some of the details of the work done here, and again, supplement G, which is that operational assessment. The commitment statement here at the bottom, maintaining a dynamic and inclusive work environment, was really the driver, the intended outcome of this work that included a number of staff interviews, focus group conversations, and a specific administrative analysis. And the intention, of course, is to re-realize what you see on the top right, continuing to see improved performance on behalf of the organization, a strong interest and commitment to attracting and retaining talent, enhanced innovation on behalf of the organization, improving decision-making, obviously, with the expectation that decisions and actions always consider consequences, a positive organizational culture, maintaining that. And then, of course, considering legal and ethical imperatives on behalf of the system. So again, the analysis and all of the feedback received is included in the supplements. There were nine recommended actions that resulted from this particular priority. Again, you can see them on the screen here, starting with establishing educational training opportunities, guidelines for all staff, all the way down to the last item, which is evaluating administrative processes. So in total, there are 53 specific actions. They have been identified as short, mid, and long-term. Some, as you can imagine, are going to be some quick wins. There'll be easy opportunities for, you know, check the box. It won't take as much It won't take as much staff time and energy or financial resource, while others are going to, again, be a bit of a heavy lift and they're going to be falling into that more long-term, um, uh, long-term, um, um, timeframe, if you will, for completion. So, uh, wanted to spend just a bit of time providing, uh, you an overview of the results of the process, the priorities, um, referencing obviously all of the resources that accompany the plan. And at this point, uh, I'll defer to Lisa and any of the team members that may have any other thoughts or comments they want to share and open the floor to all of you for any comments and questions that you, you might have of me.
Um, I just want to thank Jamie and her team. Um, this was a very, um, I guess, complex process. And it would be great teamwork between our team and their team. Um, it's a little heavy lifting between both and, and, um, I really appreciated all the community input, the ways that we got, um, not the standard same people in answering questions. I really appreciated all the effort it took for that. So kudos to your team and, um, we really enjoyed the process. And I think we have a, a document that will be a living document for the next 10 years that we can, uh, keep on making improvements to districts. So thank you and your team.
Thank you, Lisa.
Um, great job. This is a great document. Um, I know we just said this is a 10-year plan, but when I see 53 action items, I think, is there anything that really stood out to you as, like, wow, we, we need to really prioritize, you know, these three to five items out of the 53 that kind of, so I, you know, there's lots of things that I'm sure we can improve upon or need to improve, you know, but anything that you really see as a real need or, um, compared to other districts stands out to you as needing improvement?
Yeah, that, that's a great question. I would say there's two things in particular. I referenced one of them. I was actually going to include the other as well. And it's not to diminish the value, um, of any of the other actions, but I think simply because, a, a, and I, I don't say this to all systems, you have a very sophisticated system. You have a sophisticated, um, administrative team, right? You have a sophisticated board. Um, I think the recognition and realization that you are staying on top of your infrastructure, you're staying on top of taking care of what you have. Uh, the referendum item, of course, which will hopefully lead to some investment in your infrastructure. And alternatively, the heat sheet you have is impressive. Um, there are just a lot of systems that don't pay attention to those things. So the work that was done, um, over the years to get that to where it is, where it's very, it's easy to understand. Um, it's, it's in a place and space where it should be fairly, I would say, easy to update because so much work was done on the front end. Those two callouts and, um, the parks and facilities, a priority, um, gravitate to the top for me. And it's principally because I do have the privilege of working with a lot of different systems and many don't think about their existing assets until, I don't want to say it's too late, but they're almost in desperation mode and you're very proactive. And I, I'm happy to see, and I know that, that all the staff are very committed to this, but happy to see that those are in your action plan. Updating your heat sheet is a, a, an action and a task that you already do, but you're calling it out as part of your strategic action plan. And the referendum in order to enhance your maintenance shop in particular in the beach, um, is, is, I think it's essential to the future of, of those two particular assets. They're critically important to the operation, your maintenance shop, obviously to taking care of your assets. And the beaches, you know, it's a, it's a gem in the organization. So those two come to mind immediately. Again, not to suggest that all of the other actions aren't important or they wouldn't be part of this plan. But, um, I, I, it, it makes me, um, as a long time, you know, lifelong park and recreation person, uh, practitioner or consultant, um, I think that, uh, those two probably percolate to the top, um, for me. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, um, um, I'm asking in part because I, I have a coffee with the caucus next week. And, you know, I know we have all these input sessions. So I'm curious to hear about maybe from the staff. I don't know. This is a Jamie question, but how are we planning to communicate this plan? And how does the communication and the completion of this plan intersect with our referendum discussions?
That's a great question. Um, so we already have a, a title on our website for the comprehensive plan. Once it's accepted by the board, then it will be put out there. We have already started implementing a lot of the data that we have in here into the referendum informational pieces. Um, I think Erin can answer to that. Um, we've already started doing that. Um, what other?
Um, the community impact report that you just got has a lot of that data in it.
There you go. That's another one.
But yeah, we will be sharing it, um, on our website, um, social media, et cetera. Rolling it out once it's approved, accepted, I mean.
So when we, so when somebody asks me, you know, what are the top issues facing the district? I mean, obviously we talked about the referendum. We can talk about the ability, the need to improve our facilities as we discussed here. And then basically, we could talk through the priorities in here and the action items.
Exactly. That's what I would do is our, our strategic initiatives, that those top six and then, you know, go through some of the most important things to me. Staff, um, developing, keeping the culture, I should say, I think we have pretty good culture, but we can always do better is utmost importance to me to make sure that we retain high quality staff. I think that's what, um, besides our beautiful parks and facilities and keeping up with what we currently have, maintaining the high standards. Our staff is the, the key to our success also. So that's another one of those, uh, biggest things. Um, what would you, team, what do you think?
I think communicating just the tenure of CIP, that's been something that's been helpful. Say, we've been through the master plan process and we've identified the next 10 years for capital that needs to be in line with what our comprehensive plan. I think the, the community understands that and sees, sees the value in that. So that will be something I would see as important.
I think also that, um, we thought through our community survey, the value people, um, find in the park district, both not only for their home values, but, um, I was talking to someone at last night at the Lakefront Advisory Committee. She said she moved in town because of our parks. Um, and other people come and say they moved in town because of our, our, um, full day preschool. You know, those, those are important things that we provide the community. We want to make sure we continue to provide those at the high level that we have. I also think, um, sustainability, both financial and environmental, continue to be a priority for, for us um, in everything we do. Um, and that's why, you know, the new lighting in the parking lot, it's those little things they don't even think about that we're doing for sustainable reasons, our rain gardens and things like that. That remains a high priority also. I would also say, um, um, diversity and inclusion of everybody in the community to make sure that we provide that, uh, that everybody has an equal footing, equal opportunity to participate is also very important to us. John, anything else?
No, I, I, as you alluded to with the financial sustainability and, and really making sure that we don't have that strong reliance on the levy, which is kind of worked in, making sure that we're not exceeding that 50%. We know we're subject to PTEL and, um, our, our costs are going to rise, uh, at a faster pace than, uh, than PTEL will allow us to levy for. So, um, from a financial sustainable, sustainability perspective, it's that. And Lisa touched on the dynamic and inclusive workspace, just making sure that, um, you know, we're doing everything we can to continue to foster the great culture we have here. Um, bring whatever benefits are, are financially feasible, like the paid leave and things like that, enhance our benefits and, uh, continue to make this a great place to work.
And I know JD, Jamie talked a little bit about the great piece that Bobby, um, uses already and will continue to use about when we make decisions on programs and what we're going to do and what we're offering. That's an important piece to us too. Sometimes we can't be everything to everyone. Sometimes we may be the introduction to a sport or whatever. And then maybe the private sector is doing it. So we're going to introduce them and then it's okay if they go off to the private sector. So we have to kind of look at what our mission is and then our programs meet that mission and vision and, and, um, those programs is sustainable.
Yeah, and we did a deep dive into some, some of the indirect expenses that you probably saw on the screen, which was a helpful. It's just a different way of looking at how we allocate resources and what the true costs are. Um, and then having our managers and supervisors understanding those expenses. So it might make sense, you know, from a, a top line basis, just to add a program. But when you truly look at what the resources it takes, it might not make sense long-term financially for the district. So just making sure that culture gets ingrained all the way down to, to our supervisors and managers.
Kyle, I don't want to leave you out, you know.
Yeah, you, uh, covered most of it, but I think, uh, you know, having the priority goals that tie back to community input, community engagement and community surveys, being able to point to prioritizing the, the maintenance facility in the yard and being able to tie that back to survey results is, is going to be really beneficial. Uh, Jamie had mentioned the heat sheets. I think having the heat sheet is a forward-facing part of the comprehensive plan is really valuable. So it opens up, um, that book to people to be able to see how we track our assets and how they age out and how we try to plan for those, um, you know, replacements in the future. As Bobby alluded to, coming up with a 10-year CIP that's driven by the comprehensive plan, but also the heat sheet that is our living, breathing document. So.
I would agree with that heat sheet and, and the reason it was developed is because we want to make sure we're doing the best thing for the whole community and that just the people that come and demand things, we have it all spelled out, which, which is our priority, what needs to be replaced. We don't jump into new ventures without taking care of what we have. And I think that's our biggest strength is we, our goal is to take care, that's one of our initiatives. Take care of what we have before we add new facilities or amenities. That's the most important thing. And I, and this board has always agreed with that philosophy, which I, which I really appreciate. Does that give you a lot?
Yeah, that means a lot. So if you know, you're, you're to summarize, I mean, I think it was, it was helpful to get the feedback on just the, I mean, obviously we've got the different priority areas and we've got the act 53 action items, but now what rises to the top? But I think kind of the, what we discussed here helps summarize that as well. Um.
And if I may, if I may add in the action plan, the, the staff have the opportunity to, um, provide, uh, detail relative to prioritization of the actions, timelines. Uh, you know, they'll be populating that as, um, they navigate the work. But, um, I think the conversations, conversations just like this one, uh, provide insights relative to, you know, how the staff see the work ahead, how the board sees the work ahead. Uh, we have a, a column actually in that action, uh, plan, that supplement H, that provides an opportunity to prioritize something as a one, you know, being high priority, right? Significantly impactful, there's consequence if it's not acted upon in the short term. As opposed to something that, it, they're all priorities, they're all going to be important, but something that may be able to wait a little bit, given that and the bandwidth of the organization, the resources of the organization. Not everything can be done right away. So there's a chance to, uh, to, to quantify, if you will, the actions by virtue of priority one, priority two. Um, and I'm sure there'll be subsequent discussions, um, with, with the board relative to, you know, how you may, uh, as a, as a district, uh, choose to, again, prioritize all of the actions that have been presented. Exactly. Just it will be bringing those goals and the timeline. We, we think maybe should be it and then the board will bring their feedback in, um, in those actions. So it'll be a workshop.
We've got 10 years to figure it out.
What?
Got 10 years to figure out our.
Well, you know, first year we have to do and then we'll keep.
Right.
We'll keep on doing, um, the community impact report that I put, um, in front of, and Jamie doesn't have this. That's a good synopsis and a lot of the stuff we learned from, from this comprehensive plan, um, and our surveys, we implemented all that. That's a good thing to bring to residents and caucus. And I'll give you a stack before you leave to bring your coffee. Um, but it has.
Didn't drive today, so maybe I'll pick it up.
Okay, you'll pick it up. I'll leave it down in daycare. Um, but you know, uh, we'll keep on educating the community on this and we, and we could do, um, a community workshop or open house to, to talk about the conference, like, uh, con- comprehensive plan also. If you think that's, would be valuable for the community and you think people would come, we'd be happy to do that too, um, as far as we roll this out.
Right. Be confusing.
Yeah.
The referendum, I think they, I think it's just something that could be brought up in tandem with any referendum discussion.
Yeah, exactly.
And it connects back.
And that's how kind of what we're doing now is if, if you see some of those pieces, our direct pieces, we also put in the referendum informational material.
It's also an insight Glencoe this.
Yeah, it is.
When does that come out?
Pretty soon.
Hey Jamie, I have a question I don't want to spend more than one minute answering. So hopefully we can do it quickly. We debated early on about which two of the three items this park district could have. And I forget if it was, I think it was like low taxes, excellent facilities and one more, and I forget what it was.
It was, um, maintain, maintain high levels of service, add more services or stabilize fees and taxes.
Where did we end up with those two out of three?
Um, and I'd have to look, I'd have to, uh, take a look at the community engagement summary again. It's actually included in that supplement. Um, if you'd like, I'm happy to, to take a peek at it, or if you get an opportunity, you can see the results in that supplement.
You could just, you don't have to let me know now, but if you could, it was, it was quality was number one, then taxes and then qua- quantity of services. Really? I thought, I would have thought taxes came third, but that's interesting. Thank you. That was one minute. That was perfect. Good timing.
You know, it takes offense that you think so.
I understand it, but people, I, I know there's tax issues, but, um, honestly, if that were the case, we'd have a harder time without referendum, right? Because people's taxes could go down if we don't extend it. So quality and quantity, I think are going to win out. If we win the referendum, that tells us that maybe the survey results are not as. Well, let me back, let me back up. A lot of people say, um, in my line of work, that when you put food in our clubs and lounges, everyone wants healthy food. And we put out healthy food and the first thing to go are the brownies and cookies.
Yep.
So, um, and I think that probably happens at other parties as well.
Yep. If there any indication from our informational meetings, we've been holding, a lot of people have, I think, expressed to us that the quality of our park system is very important to them.
Right.
That's the overall feeling I have. I, I saw that lines up with the survey.
Yeah, I think adding amenities was not a high priority. I think there was a portion of the community, but it wasn't a majority of the community.
But the amenities they want to add are always the same, like two or three amenities and, I mean.
Probably, I mean, probably indoor pico wall is a new one, right?
That would be, that would be the third, mine, dog park and pool are always.
Pool.
So I mean, I feel like that's been beaten to death with a, a.
Right.
There was, there was more people who didn't want to, sorry, there was more people who didn't want a pool than did want a pool.
Yes.
In the survey. So that was interesting.
Cause it would raise their taxes. That was very interesting to us. I, I also think they don't want us to take away what we have.
Yeah.
I think that came loud and clear. So take care of what we have, don't take it away. Um, but don't add a pool or anything that would really raise taxes substantially.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, Bart's up.
I've, I've, uh, I have one comment, um, and it's a very, it's an impressive comprehensive plan. And we've got a top-notch staff and leadership that's put it together. And Lisa, one of the things you pointed out is she said our biggest strength is organization and staffing. And my, my career has always been in, in analysis and what are the risks? And as complex as this plan is, I have no doubt that, that this staff and leadership can execute this plan. I've been here 22 years. I have no doubt that the team that was here 22 years ago could never have executed this plan. So I look at it and I, one of the key things I simplify it to is we need to maintain the exceptional level of staff quality and leadership that we have. So be careful about getting back to the list of the 51 items and, you know, exhibit four, five and six. And, and I know that's the way the district is run now, but you need to maintain the top quality staffing. Otherwise, y- you can't execute this. That's my belief.
I, I agree. Yeah. I would say we have the best staff in the state. I would say we have the best staff in the state, but I'm a little biased. So, you know.
Okay, thank you so much. Thanks, Jamie.
Yeah, thank you.
It's been great working with you.
Thank you very much. I do want to just share this last slide if if you will indulge me. You know, I think any kind of endeavor like this, you know, the staff, all of the staff have been involved in a number of planning processes. Many, if not all of the board members have as well, but I think, you know, you I I want to share congratulations to all of you. I think this is a, it's a really good plan. It's a solid plan. It was very thoughtfully constructed. Again, I applaud this staff. I applaud this board. And I just wanted to say congratulations to all of you. And thank you all for your commitment and your professionalism. It's really been a pleasure working alongside all of you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Great work, everyone.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
I'm sure you don't want to stay for the meeting. You're out of here virtually.
All right.
Bye bye.
Good night, all.
All right. So the next item on the agenda is an overview of the community feedback received at the community meeting. Held on Thursday, August fifteenth about West Park.
Thank you, President Spain. Just bear with bear with me one second. I'm going to leave the meeting on the set. Okay. All right. So wanted to take a few minutes tonight just to kind of review the West Ozled project application to review the Ozled program. The processes as well as to share the most recent feedback we received at last Thursday's community input meeting. I know all the board members, except for Commissioner Spector, are somewhat familiar with the project and the Ozled grant program. But I'm going to kind of review everything at a high level and then get down to the the actual project details. So the board passed the resolution of authorization back in June, authorizing the district to apply for the Ozled grant this upcoming cycle. This is the same grant that the district applied for back in twenty twenty two, as well as twenty twenty three grant cycles. That was calendar year twenty one and twenty two. The twenty twenty two, sorry, I jumped ahead there. My apologies. The, so the Ozland, let me back up a little bit. The Ozland Grant Program provides assistance to park districts for the development or acquisition of open space to turn them into parks for the public's use. The current application has a deadline of September thirteenth, so just a few weeks away here. And generally, you would get a notification of award sometime in the winter, late January or in February. This funding cycle has fifty four million dollars available for grants up to six hundred thousand dollars. It is a matching grant. That six hundred thousand is up from four hundred thousand back in twenty twenty two. So we did apply again for the twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three grant cycles. The twenty twenty two rejection was primarily due to the application, including work that would take place on school district property that the park district leases. The plans were then adjusted out of that grant application to remove any work taking place on school property. Twenty twenty three, we resubmitted. It was considered a good application and we were told that we were close. And the recommendation from IDNR was to add in some more natural or native elements to the project scope. We did not submit for the twenty twenty four cycle, so calendar year twenty twenty three. And we are, as previously mentioned, pass the resolution to apply for the twenty twenty five cycle. So with that feedback we got from IDNR, we adjusted the plans for the twenty twenty five Ozlet approach. Largely kept the same in terms of the major amenities, no major changes in in terms of locations of items. But we did add in, based on the feedback from IDNR, the removal of invasive, primarily buckthorn along Dundee Road to be replaced with native plantings that would still provide a hedgerow. We also included the porta potty enclosure, bike racks and drinking fountain into the Ozled Concept Plan. We are receiving updated letters, have requested updated letters of support from Senator Morrison, Representative Morgan and Representative Katz Moll. And as previously mentioned, we did host the community input meeting last Thursday evening. We have board discussion tonight for any feedback that we might have. We have a couple of weeks to make adjustments if necessary before the September thirteenth deadline. So quickly, just wanted to recap the input received last Thursday. So again, this was the third round of community input going back to twenty twenty one. We held, we intended to hold the community input meeting over at West Park, but weather caused us to move it over to Weinberg. We did have two residents attend the meeting. They were both like the overall concept plan. Their only concerns were related to pickleball noise. Both were residents that live in close proximity to West Park. They suggested utilizing whatever noise reduction type methods we could to help minimize that impact. As well as suggested making the operating hours from eight AM to eight PM. For context, the pickleball courts at Weinberg have a operating hours of seven AM to eight PM. One of those two residents was concerned about the gazebo location. The staff in discussions with Hitchcock, you know, the placement of the gazebo gazebo location is really intended to allow for easy sightlines for public safety. Moving it further back into the park, we'd have concerns about, you know, activities taking place. And one of the residents attended also requested a tennis backboard be installed to allow for solo play. In addition to the two community members that attended the Thursday meeting, we did have one email come through. This resident suggested doing a full multipurpose synthetic turf field in lieu of the infield only is currently designed. So currently, it's strictly the infield playing area of the baseball field. The outfield remains turf grass. The suggestion was to turn the entire field into a synthetic field. They also suggested adding a batting batting cage. Just to review quickly, the existing conditions over at West Park. They are the major amenities, the tenant, the racket courts and both ball fields are captured on our heat sheets. They are all at that thirty year mark and a pass are passing their useful life. The conditions can be observed onsite or hopefully captured in the pictures here with the cracks, heaving footings as well as the backstops and drainage issues. They also do not have ADA accessibility to the ball fields. So the proposed amenities as part of the Ozled application, I just wanted to mention before we go through them that the images up here are meant to just kind of represent what we kind of can put out there, but not not to get bogged down in the colors or the size or the specifics, just to understand what we can do in these locations. So kind of going around here, we have a new updated dugouts, backstops, bleachers, as well as ADA access to those elements. The artificial turf field in option B, again, just want to note, even though the infield was brown, that is artificial turf. But where it becomes natural turf is at that grass line with the outfield. We have the two dedicated pickleball courts going on the west end of the existing footprint. That would be a reduction from four mixed use courts down to two permanent courts. We have a crushed gravel ADA pathway connecting public right of ways to all the elements within the park site, a picnic shelter gazebo located adjacent to the racket courts. Shuffleboard and bocce ball as well in that general area. And then rain gardens behind both ball fields as well as the invasive plant removals along Dundee Road. So taking just a quick aerial overview of the site, again, referencing back to the amenities we just discussed, you could see the gravel pathway going around the entire western perimeter of the site, connecting both the large ball field, the small ball field on the southwest, as well as the pickleball courts, picnic shelter, bocce ball and shuffleboard. Items M and L are the porta potty enclosure, bike racks and drinking fountains to the top left of the tennis courts. The rain gardens are located behind each backstops. And again, along Dundee Road, item K is the removal of the invasive species replaced with native plantings. Our construction cost estimate for the Ozled Concept Plan is one point five million. This cost would be funded by the six hundred thousand dollar Ozled Grant as well as nine hundred thousand in district fund balances. These figures do align with our figures that are in captured in the heat sheets. As we discuss kind of the future projects that we have to tackle to keep our infrastructure updated. So again, Next Steps is hosting this meeting tonight after the community input last Thursday. Getting any additional feedback, questions or tweaks that the board wishes to make. Have a chance to review those with Hitchcock Design Group over the next one to two weeks and get our grant application submitted by September thirteenth. And again, a likely announcement in January or February of twenty twenty five. Happy to answer any questions and can also back up to any of the slides if you want to look more closely at anything.
Yeah, so so one of the neighbors wanted a backboard for tennis. But the tennis courts, aren't they on the school property?
So, yes, they are on the school property. We would work with the district on completing those tennis courts at the same time as the pickleball courts. But the the backboard would be on the tennis court portion of the court if we wanted to move forward with adding that in, which is something we certainly could accommodate.
And we could add that later on. I mean, that's a relatively affordable add on later on, should we want to. It doesn't do part of the Ozla grant?
Yes.
We could absolutely do that. We don't have to put it as part of the Ozla grant, but we just have to be careful of. It's interesting because that same resident was worried about noise from pickleball court and then.
That's just as loud.
That we had at Watts was kind, it was very interesting. So.
Plus it was a big deal.
Yeah, it was a big deal. So we really have to think about that, you know. That's noisy. So we would have to really think about whether we wanted to add one there and what people thought. Because that was invented by everybody. So.
I I remember talking to people who lived right next to this course and the backboard was there. And it was one couple who said, no, there's no noise. It's not a problem, whatever. I then learned they were pickleball players. They went over to play. The next people were not pickleball players and the noise bothered them immensely. And I guess there was a, someone was using it to shoot the lacrosse ball.
Yeah, exactly. So we really have to think about that.
It should, it shouldn't be directed near the house. I just, you know, I guess the point is, think through that. You're aware of how that can go wrong.
Exactly. I think we do. I think our recommendation, if there's any changes, if I can be so bold, is that we would do the noise mitigation at this court, just like we would recommend at other courts. So the the screening and maybe natural plantings or something that would be unnatural, which we would do, which I think we said we would do at like we have at Weinberg. And the other one would be, what was the second one?
There was the 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 backboard, the noise mitigation, and then the gazebo.
The gazebo.
Location.
Yeah, so the gazebo, we would not recommend changing that because of the sightlines for safety. And the backboard is something that we really have to look into. One person brought it up, but it was never vetted in the community. So I think we should wait to see if there's more people that want that. If there's outcry of that one. So be careful on that one. But those, and the gazebo. Just be careful that, you know, really educate people. It's not a huge gazebo like Cock Park. It's a small one. So the the party sizes aren't as big as people would envision. Maybe they're thinking of cock. Something similar to the size of Shelton. So manage those expectations so we can stay within budget. So.
Can you just put the map back up? Is it on, is the gazebo?
Gazebo is set right here to the left of the lower court. Having technical difficulties.
Okay, that's on the other side. It's along Willow Tree Lane.
Yes.
There we go.
So that way, if public safety goes by, they can see that, which is important. That's why you have the clock, open sightlines. That's why you have Shelton open sightlines. So kids aren't in there after hours.
Do we have a water fountain there currently?
There is.
Yes, definitely.
I don't remember.
It's not accessible. I do not believe it has a bottle filler or a high low, so it would be, it would get replaced with the accessible.
Yeah, if it's a heavy rain and you've got kids playing baseball there, the park gets.
Yep. I I should have mentioned drainage improvements are part of the ball field renovations in the turf outfield area as well. So
So.
That's another element.
That adds up into.
My, I guess my question is, the infield you said is artificial.
Yes.
So why? Was that always part of the initial plan for it to be artificial? Okay.
Yeah, so that we have more, so we can use it more of the season after rains and things like that.
Easier to maintain the artificial.
The artificial?
Yeah.
It's less ongoing, you know, day to day maintenance. There's no grass to cut, no weeds to control. You have to groom it once or twice a week versus daily to prep for games. And with this configuration, you still get the benefit of having natural turf that you have to mow, but you're not doing that detail work that comes with having a a sodded infield and clay as well.
Now that my kid is no longer playing baseball, I'm less biased here, but it is, it was also a design designed to dip our toes in the water of whether or not this is a investment we want to make in other parks. Our baseball fields are a solid B and people are always wanting to be a little bit better. So I think this is a smart way for us to test into it. Most, like Winnetka has a bunch of fields like this and they can use them all year. So it'll be interesting to see how the community takes it. But I think that was our discussion a while ago, is this was dipping our toes in the AstroTurf?
Yeah.
Yep.
First, yeah.
Exactly.
The synthetic infield will allow for baseball of multiple age groups as well as softball, whereas a sodded infield would not allow for that. And then here, take if we have the all clay infield, which is like the preferred softball surface. And then that still leaves us with Berlin and Watts having the sodded infields, which we just made an investment in improving those as well this past year.
So this is due the thirteenth. Do we have to approve anything? We already approved going for the grant, right?
Yeah.
Do we need to do approve anything else? Or is this just a consensus during this meeting to do the application?
This is a consensus unless there's any feedback or tweaks that you want to make to the plan. To Lisa's point, something like a backboard or the noise dampening panels don't necessarily have to be part of the Ozled plan. That's, those are relatively cheaper things we could add in in the future if desired.
I'd rather not, just in case we, something goes over budget, you know, like unless it gives extra points, I'd rather not over promise.
Well, I would say.
That's the only thing we recommend is that, you know, the the grants, they like to see that you took into account for community input. So we might say, you know, we heard that people worry about the noise of of the pickleball courts and we will look at noise mitigation as part of the project. Now, what that noise mitigation means is
Right.
totally up in there. We won't over promise that, but that's something they like to see that we listened, you know. For example, you know, we have granite, you know, pathways, not cement pathways. I mean, that was important. I know in one of our community input, they didn't want to see more concrete out there, so we made sure it was natural, you know.
It'll also help with not triggering any M W R D type of footprint expansions or impervious surfaces.
Is that still accessible, though?
Yep.
Yep.
That's what you could do, like the crushed granite that we have, connect Glencoe, crush limestone, as long as it meets certain A S T M specifications. And it doesn't have too much slope. It's an ADA surface.
Okay, I've got two questions that may not, that may already have been answered. And if they have, I apologize. One, why, I know we talked this far, why aren't we making this pathway full circle?
I can answer that. So this is, we're just talking about the Ozled Grant, which can only take place on park district property, which is that line right there. In the future, if the school district would like to finish that pathway.
They have that option. Okay.
They have that option, but this is not part of this program. In fact, we're, when we submit the grant, we are taking out the whole school part of it. We're just going to show our field. This will not be submitted that way.
Totally on board. I completely forgot that and thank you.
Designed in a way to make that very seamless in the future where it terminates here, it terminates here. And then you would just close that loop down the future if desired.
And I think one of the improvements we made since the last time is actually, we didn't have a connection to the sidewalk on Dundee Road in the first iteration, I believe. And that was really important to the neighbors. They liked that idea of being able to go out and be able to to access Dundee Road and really the botanical gardens from there. I don't think it was.
Somebody has made an opening already in place, either by just passing through, but.
They have the, you know, the unofficial thing, but this would be officially connecting it, which is, that's a another improvement that the neighbor said, can we make that permanent so we can get out to Dundee to get to the botanical garden? So that was another improvement that was made, but we have access to all the sidewalks, which we didn't have before. So.
Yeah, that's huge.
Um, huge. And my second question is, and again, I hope this is not a longer one, long answer, but what is the gazebo there for aesthetics? Like, I see the gazebo at Shelton. No one's, I mean, the gazebo at Cock, you see parties and things like that because it's big. Like, what's the point of a small gazebo?
Shade. Basically shade. Yeah.
Well, and I've seen, I mean, I used it like for our kindergarten party, we used it and I've seen.
At Shelton?
Mm hmm.
Oh, wow.
And I've seen like tennis groups sitting over there and using it.
Awesome.
You don't see it's that huge party place, but for small gatherings.
Yeah.
Shade, pickleball tennis players like to, it's a social game, so they want to sit out afterwards. So.
Okay, thank you.
Baseball teams can meet under there for meetings before or after games.
Is the, will the gazebo be designed before the submission or just a gazebo on a map like this?
We could review the options when we find out about a grant award and what specific elements. There's a bunch of different types of shelter and gazebos and of different sizes, configurations, prefab and. There's a bunch of different types of shelter and gazebos of different sizes, configurations, prefab and.
It's not designed. So. No, it's not designed before. So that's something that, again, we can make, we can, depending on budget, what comes in, and we can scale it down or up as far as the how fancy it is or how big it is, or same with the dugouts and the baseball, they could be as simple as putting a bench there with the fence in front of them. You know, it's depending on budget, we can scale those around. All we have to do is have dugouts.
One brief comment on that is in Cock Park, the old wooden gazebo, you could sit in it if it was raining and stayed dry. But the the one that's there now has an elevated center with an
couplé.
Open to the air and you really can't sit in it if it's raining, it's wet inside. So you you might want to consider making it, you know, people were playing pickleball or tennis and it rains briefly, you'd like to have a place.
Sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
When we do the final design, just conceptual, it would definitely come back to the board or to take a note in consideration, but that's a good note to make.
Thank you.
So we do not need official vote on this. We just need to, we just wanted to share what the comment was, if there was any changes. So we'll go forward in submitting this.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing else, we can move on to the executive director report.
Great. I'll try to make this fast. First of all, I'd like to really thank the the staff for an outstanding summer for both day camp and aquatics. They hit it out of the park. So I I can't really believe summer's over already. I always judge my summer about how many calls I get. I had no calls this summer. So that was huge. So kudos to the team. That that's really impressive. So that never happens. So they'll go to Bobby or Kyle, but that's okay. That's, to me, that's good. We're making progress. Beginning of my career, I got a lot of calls. So the staff did an amazing job. So Adam really did a great job stepping up since Eric and Eric had helped a lot in camp also. And we do have a replacement. She'll come to the next meeting, introduce her. But we were really, I'm just very impressed with the staff and not only the programming, but also maintenance and parks and side of it. Who works behind the scenes to beautify everything, but also make sure that camps and aquatics are running smoothly. So kudos to this team. They and and all the managers and all the seasonal part-time staff, they did an amazing job. So kudos to all of them. We just finished our closure and Kyle and Matt did an outstanding job in that week we closed. You wouldn't believe how much gets done. So we appreciate the community's, I guess, tolerance of that, but having no one in our building gets a lot more done in a short time, including the Kilnsen. So we are very excited about that as a staff. So after the meeting, if anybody wants to go see it, it's pretty, pretty impressive. Our Kiln room now, I don't know anybody else who has a room like that. So we're very proud of that. Kyle alluded to that we are redoing Central and Watts tennis courts. They're almost finished probably by next week. They'll have the the asphalt layer put down, then they have to sit for three weeks and then the color coating. So don't want to be playing on them for another probably about five to six weeks, hopefully sooner. You know, give a longer deadline and over promise. So the thanks to him and like he said, he also did work on two of our baseball fields. Just a note, I am sure you read in the report, we are having some problems with the fire alarm system in the maintenance area. We're still trying to see what we can do in the short term without investing a lot of money to improve that. So stay tuned, but we do, we are getting some false alarms and fire department coming out and things like that in that area. So that just leads to the problems that we're having in that area. Other than that, I'm going to turn it over to John, talk a little bit to introduce Grant and also talk a little bit about fall, our fall registration, some issues we had and how we're resolving those. So.
Yep. Thanks, Lisa. So registration day, just wanted to kind of recap. It did start off a bit slower than we would have liked. This was the first registration that L six was fully in control of here. And they they were, there were some steps taken ahead of time, working with VSI, making sure we addressed any recommendation and optimization that they would have recommended. So as we were kind of going through the registration, what as they recapped everything, what they noticed from our end internally is just the the hard drive space was was being stressed during peak times of registration. So that was actually part of some of the upgrades that they're looking to make this year. Some IT infrastructure upgrades. So that's certainly going to be addressed amongst other things. And and really, it just turns into just additional dialogue with VSI, where we're exploring, you know, whatever we can do to try to stress test the system and simulate a live registration as much as possible. We'd like to do that, working with VSI to see what we can do in that regard. And also just looking at the option for priority registration also for school days off and things of that nature to help ease the stress on the system. It's, it's, you know, everybody's getting in line at at the same time. So it's, you know, we are going to run into these these issues, but L six is definitely looking into addressing them as as much as we possibly can with whatever options we have. So we are looking at addressing that and hoping for improvement, planning for improvement for future registrations.
Right.
And also, I don't believe everybody's had the opportunity to meet our new HR manager. It's not Brian. Hopefully, everybody's met Brian. But Grant Gilchrist, who I think, I guess we could still call him our our new hire from about the middle of June. But Grant has been really hitting the ground running here in an array of projects that we've been taking on and and he's been doing a great job thus far for the district in his first two months here. So we're certainly happy to to welcome Grant and look forward to what he's going to achieve here at the district.
Welcome, Grant. All right. Any questions?
Did we have the beachfront advisory meeting yet?
The beach?
Yeah.
Yes, it was last night.
And anything, any feedback from that?
Yeah, we 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 did have two residents come down asking for additional paddleboard and kayak storage, mostly paddleboard, I believe, and entered into discussions of why things were done. It's more of an education and Bobby and and the Lakefront Committee did a great job. We'll conclude, include some of those in the end of the beach report, but we are right now very limited to space that we can have, and it also has to do with safety. They they did come with some creative ideas, so we're going to try to explore those as a team. We really haven't had time to do that yet to see if any of their ideas would be that we could implement, I guess you could say. So Bart was the chair. Do you have anything to add to that?
We just. It was a great meeting and it was just amazing how resilient the beaches and the the leadership there and and extra passes being sold as the summer went on. That was a, it was an excellent, it was an excellent meeting and very little in the way of demands other than paddleboards. So it was the shortage of paddleboard spaces. But I went, I went about quadrupling the three-minute limit on questions from people because that was the main question and I thought they had good points and
Absolutely.
Spent extra time with them afterwards. Yeah, that prompted some good thinking, but no, it's it's going, it's going well.
We do have a large waiting list for paddleboards. During the pandemic, I think everybody bought a paddleboard. But we're we're not the only beach has this problem. Willmet has 500 people on their waitlist. We did. We did do a little bit of education. People can bring their paddleboards down before we open or after we open. They just have to be off the beach prior to people coming into the beach that day, after the season's over, they do. So some of those individuals didn't know that. So they may be able to utilize that. So I think we'll, we'll continue to look at creative ways. Hoping that once we, if the rougher on the passes, we're able to put no boat racks in, hopefully, we'll be able to streamline that a little bit and get extra space down there to alleviate some of that. But but I don't know if we'll.
Yeah.
I want to manage expectations. I don't think we'll be able to take everybody off the waitlist, even if the rougher on the passes. There's just so many so many boats that we could put on the shores, so many going out at one time and things like that. I mean, would love to have a creative way where, okay, you could take your kayak out Monday, Wednesday, Friday and Saturday, and you take yours out Tuesday, Thursday, Sunday or something like that, because then we would, you know, but of course, everybody wants to take it on the same beautiful eighty-five degree on a Saturday or Sunday, and that's where that's where we become with the problem.
And they want, and they want their own board. They don't want the rentals, which is a challenge. One thing we are going to do as part of the comprehensive plan is increase transparency around the waitlist. So what we're going to do is publish the waitlist without their names, but their household numbers. So they'll be able to see where they are on the waitlist. So hopefully gain some trust. So people understand that there is a process behind that. We've got through, I think, eight people off the waitlist on paddleboards this summer. And we think we've got about four or five spots open at this point for next year, but we're getting more people added than we are taking in. So it's only going to continue to grow. And as Lisa said, I think Willmet's over 500 on the waitlist.
I think the most frustrating thing and the members of the advisory committee admitted this is that when they go down there and they see a paddleboard that has cobwebs on it, for example, or a sailboat, that's very frustrating. They're like, we know they're not using it. And it, you know, that's something that we'll bet around, like, what do we do about that? What if we see someone not using a space, but they'll pay, they have the money to pay and keep on renting it? Is there a point where we say, you're not using it, you have to take it off the beach? And what point is that for the board? And the advisory committee was very, they're like, well, what if it was just a bad year? What if someone was sick? And that's why they didn't use it. That year, it's not fear to kick them off the beach. So there's a lot of nuances to it, you know, and and I can see their frustrations. I totally get it. They they're talking about, can we stack boards? We recommend that they reach out somehow to paddleboard owners to see if they could share a board, like ownership of a board or ownership of the spot. I know you did that, I believe, right? Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think, I think sharing is a really good idea. If anybody wants to share a spot with me, let me know because I don't use it that much. But two is, you know, maybe we think about investing in better boards for renters and that would alleviate it because the rented boards are there.
Yeah, they are.
They are heavy, they're not modern, but like if we had a better board, maybe that would, like top line boards, maybe that would be like, oh, you know what? I don't want to own it. I can rent a really good one.
I think the frustration with that is, and this one lady said, she goes, I want to use my board. I'm used to my board. She does a blow up board, which I hate blow up boards. So it's kind of that different thing. And also, when you rent our paddleboards, we don't know if you're expert or you're a beginner. We only let them go out so far. And I understand that's their frustration. They say they rent it once and they never rent again because they have to stay within a certain area. I understand that frustration too, but how how are we supposed to balance safety? So there's a lot of nuances, but we'll, we'll continue to work. We understand, I know it was on social media, there were, there's people that want, you know, want it, and all we really could do is to keep on educating why we have these restrictions.
Think there's a way that we can. There's a way to find out, explore walking down there with a backpack one that does not, because I think walking down with a board on that thing is could be dangerous, but walking down with a backpack one and signing away a liability to blow up during the week. Maybe, I mean, quite frankly, people do it, do it for six, eight, anyway, when it's not there. It's like, how do we?
Bobby, you could explain his concerns to that.
Well, I actually think there is an option there for if you sign a waiver and you've gone through and, you know, an online tester, you've acknowledged what all that sort of stuff. There is an option to to limit. What we want to avoid is 20 or 30 of them. Some of the challenges that have happened over the years, and we've been very lucky, is when you get a westerly wind and people who don't know what they're doing, or a storm comes through and you've got 20 or 30 boards out there, you end up with 30 boards in the middle of Lake Michigan, which is not a good place to be. And traditionally, it's mostly kids not wearing life jackets because the parents have let them out there. So it becomes a liability risk for the district. So we had, we had to be, people don't like it, but we had to be very careful what what we allow. And if we have a facility open with guards on duty, there's, there is a duty for us to make sure we're we're keeping an eye out on people. So not what ends up happening, the people, you go to the lowest denominator, it's the person who got it as a gift. They want to try it. They have no experience. They come down and they go out. So it's just, it is hard for us.
It is hard.
True.
My son got, I was like, you're not rescuing us. I made it back, but it was really hard. But I I hear you and I understand that. I think there's, there's probably a balance out there.
You're right. You're 100% right. There is.
That's what we'll look into, you know, balancing that safety aspect because it's not even liability. You've seen on the news
Yeah.
almost every day this summer, someone getting on a sailboat or kayaks and paddleboards. And that's just something that we don't want on our conscience. So we have to figure out how to balance that and how to, how to make sure these individuals know what they're doing. So.
Do think you need to make that more clear. Residents need to understand the rationale.
Yes.
Why we are doing this. I just don't think they do. And quite frankly, I don't think about the western means, so you just mentioned it.
Yeah.
And I remember being like struggling to get back in and it's tough. So I think, I think people need to understand the rationale and will think why do ourselves better.
I totally agree with you on that. We have to figure out a way how to educate people on that because we spend the time at these meetings when they come and they're like, oh, I never thought of that. That, I mean, the two individuals who came last night, after Bobby talked to them for a half hour, they're like, oh, that makes sense. So, you know.
Right.
That's exactly what we're talking about doing. Exactly what we're doing. Yeah.
Yeah, we could look to expand the beach safe as well into actually community education. We've already been working with the township through Nutria to educate people on, hey, beach season's coming up. We need to be careful. Here's things to watch out for. So there's an opportunity to educate people there.
Absolutely. Those are some of the things. But thanks for the question.
Are we done with the executive director?
I am done. There's no more questions. I'm good.
Just sorry, one question. We're one more board application, too. I got a question from someone and I couldn't find it anywhere.
September fifteenth. I will send you what I've received from the caucus the other day, but it's in September fifteenth.
Isn't there a posting that we put on the?
I looked.
I did. I just put on social media.
Oh, I wasn't on social media too, because I looked last week and I couldn't find it anywhere. So.
We put it up yesterday night, actually. Yeah, so look on social media. We just put it up there. We just advertised that, but.
It really just goes sooner than.
caucus website. Than in the past. So September is the deadline. And again, I would like to really, if anybody wants to come talk to me, I had two meetings so far for people that were interested in learning more about it. And I'm happy to meet with anybody that wants to learn more about what the commitment is.
Okay. All right, great. So we've got at least two action items here.
Yep.
I entertain a motion to accept the Glencoe Park District 2024 to 2020, 2033. I'm not used to saying that. Comprehensive master plan as presented. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Born?
Yes.
Commissioner Colby?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Spector?
Yes.
President Spain?
Yes. I entertain a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the village of Glencoe as presented. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick question. Is it one way? They're servicing our cars and is it two ways or is it one way?
Two ways. So it's a, it's a shared services. We've been doing this for years, just re-upping this. We, they do our vehicles and and things like that, and we do all their mowing.
Got it. Okay. And is it, it says they have the right to bill us. Do we actually bill or is it like a?
For parts and things like that. So if there's, yeah, yeah, but for labor, we do not.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Born?
Yes.
Commissioner Colby?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Spector?
Yes.
President Spain?
Yes. So I see on here, if needed, only around a special board meeting for September third.
Exactly. I just put that in there in case you weren't prepared to approve or accept the comprehensive plan, which you have. So we do not have actually a need for a special meeting or a committee meeting in September.
Okay. So, yeah, because I won't be, I won't be here September third. So that.
So well, that worked out perfect. So that's not, we can cancel that meeting, which we don't need action on. So.
And then we'll have a board meeting the third.
Actually, we switched to Wednesday because of schedules and that's already been put out in your calendar. So it's, it'll be the third Wednesday of the month, which is eighteenth.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
Got it.
That's what you switched it to for you? Yep.
Yep. He's like, really?
Okay. Um, is there any other business?
There is no other business.
Okay, I recommend entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Um, who am I giving to? Schneider? Okay, who's second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. Great discussion.
If you don't.